The Villapark City Council to order. Mr. Ropel, would you please lay us in the pledge of allegiance? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I guess we should have taken Rohl first, but...
Okay. Councilwoman Fasenelli?
Present.
Councilman Nelson?
Mayor Protim Brazini?
Here.
Mayor Hawkeye?
Here.
Okay. Today will be a special meeting for purposes of reviewing our proposed budget. But before we begin, are there any public comments? Okay. Hearing none. City manager, could you please proceed with the budget discussion?
This reflects the second workshop. You recall, last one is in early May. At that time, we basically outlined the assumptions in which we were building and received sort of informal direction about things that the council did not want to see as a budget. For those who are interested, we have a handout today. We got free to have a supply for each of the powerpoint positions, each of the council members, and there's copies up here if you'd like. If you have a copy, we'll also be showing it on the screen. Tonight is to basically show you where we're at. We've refined our projections. We've incorporated those things in. And we've incorporated those items that we've received direction. And subsequently, what we did is we got to a point where we were plus or minus, and we applied our balancing measures in there. So tonight, we're going to walk you through where we are and sort of receive further direction or, you know, there's no votes tonight. Tonight is more of, again, this is where we are, and this is where it lands based on everything we talked about. We will be giving you within the next two weeks, you'll have a full budget document that will be upper consideration, that will reflect all those things we talked about. You will see and will talk about today, the items that we carried forward or talked about in our May budget briefing will address those as part of the adjustments we made. Again, the point of tonight is to basically walk you through where we are and show you the balancing strategy. I'd like to say we had more than enough money to do everything. We don't. I will say to start off, we are in a very healthy position. We are balanced, and we will be in a very stable financial position even after taking the balancing actions. The balancing actions are addressing priorities that we sort of have to do based on previous council direction. So first of all, if you look at the first page or the second page, there you see right there, I'll let Frank walk you through. The important thing to note here is that our expenditures are consistent with our available resources. So, end of the day, both for this year, we're within budget, and next year, we will be within our budget. So that's an important thing that we are balancing. Not all we have to be balanced, but we'll talk about how we got there. In a minute, I'll let Frank walk you through the first page here. Sorry.
What this chart shows is basically for all of funds, the state's funds, how we're balancing. And what the budget was for this current year, '17, '18, the projections for this year by end of year revenues and expenditures, as well as the budget for '18, '19, and whatever varies there is. What I wanted to show you is the funding sources and the funding uses. So in the funding sources, obviously, we have the revenue, a major portion being property tax, the other being intergovernmental. Intergovernmental revenues, mature grants from the state, possibly even the federal government, as well as sales tax and our licensing and permits. Generally, revenues you would hope would equal expenditures, but it doesn't always have to happen that way because you can have fund balance that is freed up and available from either prior years or the current year that will also be a funding source for the next year. So that's what we're trying to show in this chart, that basically the budget is balanced based on, you know, funding sources as well as funding uses.
So one of the things that's important, we talk about a fund balance carried forward. The fund balance we're talking about carried forward, projects aren't completed or we haven't spent the money. That money will then be carried forward to complete those projects in the coming year. The ongoing is not intended to cover operational expenses. So the use of those fund balance isn't carrying our budget, if you will. Our revenues are consistent with our operating expenditures. It's the capital expenses, and I don't know what's wrong with this. I don't know if that's mine. But anyway, the long and the short of it is, we are balanced on our operating side of things, but the capital projects, because of the delays or movement of project timeframes, that money that's unspent carries forward, so that shows up as what you would say a fund balance carryover that we use to balance our budget.
But can we take this and, can we get some definitions here for some details, first for the public and as well as for people in the audience? Taxes, obviously, property taxes, correct?
Property taxes, sales taxes.
Okay. Intergovernmental?
Intergovernmental, like the grants from Measure M, those types of OCTA ones that we get for, you know, the different programs that grant funded or whatnot.
Okay. And why were we so off from our budget in 2017, 2018?
We had alleged FEMA revenues to receive, as you recall, under Mesa Henderson.
Okay.
We included that in there, and that is not going to be received this year, so there's a significant variance that we will not receive. And you'll see that next year, we're not projecting FEMA revenue, but that was a major assumption we made last year based on the input we received at the time.
And will there be a footnote in the budget for that? Because that's huge. That's huge.
It'll be documented all over.
And Steve, just to recap, and that's basically because FEMA has so many major projects that are going on, Houston, Miami, Puerto Rico, or at least that's the political rationale that we've heard, or bureaucratic rationale.
They have not, but again, they have not formally given us notification that they're not funding us, but they have not formally given us notification. They've all funding us.
Okay.
Their comment continues to be as recent as this week. It's with our legal department.
Okay.
And, you know, I'm getting to the point where I sort of know the legal department as well as I know our own city attorney. We contact them, we work with them, but they're a reimbursement type of situation. So at this point, I'm not going to put the money in the budget that we're receiving it.
Right.
Because staff indicate their recommendation is that we will not get funding from them on reimbursement. So I'm not anticipating. So we are operating on sort of a worst-case scenario as if we won't receive the money. So you see, for instance, councilwoman, the intergovernmental, whereas 1.1 million in projected this year, it's very consistent next year, meaning we're not anticipating that additional FEMA money coming in next year.
Yeah. So the variance that we experienced in this past or this current fiscal year is because we have not received the FEMA funding that we had hoped to receive?
Largely so, yes.
All right. Special assessments?
Special assessments would be the types of things we receive for the sewer pump repair. That's a flat dollar amount that was established.
Right. That's on the property taxes, right? License and permits, are we referring here to building licenses and permits?
Yes, those would be building permits and business licenses.
Fines and forfeitures?
Parking citations.
Okay. Does that include liens on code enforcements and such?
I guess, but there's only, there's only one lien, and that's for the signs of the spending that we were receiving. There's only one that's out there at this point.
But last year, we had two or three?
Well, we declared, but we never, we declared properties, but we were able to resolve them without ever having to go to lien. So in other words, our request is, so the owner, you pay these, and we're not going to establish, there's no need to establish a lien. So for instance, the property on Valley, we were reimbursed, so there's no need to establish a lien. So you're correct, we would have applied a lien, but I'm not inclined to do that if the owner is willing to pay for the cost. It's their choice.
Okay. So with that, then, what is our history of those fines and forfeits? What's our history of liens that we've imposed on properties over the years that we've not collected or that's outstanding?
They've been fully collected. The most recent is a $1,000, the only pending lien that we have is a $1,000 that we just literally filed with the county clerk recorder on day 29th. That was for the property on Valley. The reason we are doing that is not, the owner in the past has paid the lien. The reason he's not this year because there's a trustee sale on the property, and the owner is not going to pay it. He's going to let the proceeds of whatever pay it to the sale. So we established a lien and recorded lien prior to the sale, which will be the next day. So the question will be what, and I don't know the answer.
And that, yeah, and I don't need, I'm looking at what the balance is for us. So we have $1,000, the city has $1,000 out there. Great. Rental and investment income?
Basically, interest income, investment income, various city investments.
Okay. So we were down 10 grand. Oh, no. No, here we're up 10 grand. Here we are. All right, we're up 10 grand, and we're anticipating 50.
Slight improvement.
And is that an investment income or is that a rental income? What's the breakdown of that? It's mostly investment. It's not rental?
No, we don't, we don't have significant rental income.
That seems kind of funny there because it looks like we're renting something out that are...
It's a category title by line item, they categorize them.
Don't you have rental income for...
Yeah, it's a relatively small amount for this.
That's what I'm saying, small amount, but there is some rental income.
Should we, I just look at it, and it looks like we have rental property or we don't have a community center where we make any rental income. Is that just something that we've carried over and called it rental and investment? Because I like this, the way this is presented, but now what it does is it allows you to focus on those words. And when I see rental income, it tells me that we're renting out something.
I'm mistaken, this is the state category of title that we're using. Correct. So we don't get to choose the accounting titles for these line items. So this is something that we're, we have requirements.
As a category.
Okay.
In the budget, you know, we really just have it as interest income.
Okay. Wonderful. Charges for services?
That's for plan check and those types of things.
Okay. And other is just miscellaneous? Okay. If, once you get to the expenses, if you could outline what those definitions are, that would be great.
Personnel services would be the cost of staff.
Okay.
Direct staff here, the 10 people that we have, well, not 10 people, we have four full-time, four part-time. Yeah. And that, that's the extent of that.
Is that benefits or just salary?
That's the full cost.
That's the full cost?
Yes. Yes. The, I'm sorry, the maintenance and operations, those would be operational expenses. That would be, you know, your pre-trimming, your gasoline costs or the utility costs, law enforcement. It's law enforcement. The contract services we pay for would fall under there as well. For instance, the engineering contracts, we call the sheriff's contract, which, you'll see, that's the single largest item in our contract, and that's for maintenance and operations.
So our engineering, our planning department and so on, because they're not employees, everything would be under the maintenance. That would not be under personnel services.
Correct.
Wonderful.
And the biggest item there is, a million seven of that is the sheriff.
Sure.
So we're, you know, our single largest expenditure item above all others is public safety.
Correct. Okay.
Capital outlay, equipment, that would be sort of replacing, you know, equipment, we have money set aside to do truck replacement or repairs and those types of services.
When do we list it as a capital? What's the threshold now for government if we buy a piece of, an equipment? What dollar amount does it need to be capitalized versus expenses?
I believe it's $5,000.
It's that low?
I believe so, yes.
Again, that's a government accounting statement.
Right. So that's why I was asking. It's, that's low.
A lot of these codes and wording are sort of carried forward so that we don't get to...
I have a question on capital outlay. Just what is capital outlay? I'm wondering what equipment is.
Well, it's a category, as you see, but with regards to the equipment coding, that's the 6,000 account coding versus the capital projects, which is 7,000. So it's just capital outlay if you go buy a truck.
So it's really equipment?
Yes, but it's again a title issue here.
Okay.
It's just like the rental item, that it's the title that we're prescribed to use by the state.
Okay.
It's not the wording that we would all choose, all language terms, but that's why government budgeting is so easy to decide.
Well, $5,000 is awfully low for, you know, to call it capital for an agency this large.
Right. You're almost at the point where you can get, you know... You're almost at the point where you can get, you know, well, computers at that point. If we're a major printer or something that we provide, you know, replace, that becomes a capital equipment.
So then when does it turn into a capital project?
Capital projects are projects that are infrastructure, building, you know, those type of non-equipped, higher ticket items. Yeah, non-fixed assets, if you will. So that those are items that would be sewer repair, storm drain repair, street repair, building replacement.
Because that, that word, although I know what that word means, our residents, they hear the word infrastructure, and they're not sure what that encompasses. So as we go along, you'll hear, we want those definitions, and it's not, you know, they want to know, what does that mean? Street repair, new curbs, painting, are you buying a new building? They don't really know exactly what goes in there, so.
Now we have one piece of property, and that's the one we're sitting in right now. And there are no plans to replace it that I'm aware of unless you all decide otherwise. And we have the equivalent of five vehicles, two maintenance trucks that the president should see daily. We also have a pickup truck that will be used for code enforcement and building inspection. And then we have two sedans that were, are used by our PSRs to go out and do checks in the community. And actually, we use them by our engineering users to go out and whatever as well throughout the community. That's the totality of our fleet, if you will. Otherwise, from a fixed asset, if you were thinking in your terms and my terms, this building?
That's it.
And that's it. And those five vehicles, that's all we have. We don't have anything else. I believe everything else is depreciated, or the trailer and those kinds of things are all depreciated and little value at that point.
Wonderful. Thank you for the glossary.
And the library is actually part of this building?
Yes.
And?
It is, it is in totality part of this building and owned by the city.
Okay. And we don't charge the county for library rental?
No, no, we don't. We actually don't pay, we charge them, I charge them for things that they're doing. For instance, if they're upgrading things like they're doing right now, they're paying for it, I'm not. So if they're painting a building that we're not doing on a regular schedule, they pay for it. They want to, but if they were asking shampoo or carpet, just like we do it. We do the daily maintenance, we'll continue to do. What we don't do is like, they want to upgrade their computer equipment, their dollar. They want to put new shelving units in, their dollar. They want to change something along those lines, that's their money. We'll do the routine maintenance type of thing, cleaning the floors, emptying the trash can, you know, paid utilities, those kinds of things.
Thank you.
There is, and you are actually very, one of the things that's required as part of our budget is a glossary that's pretty expensive. So you are absolutely right, that's, it is something that's a necessity for people to understand because if you look at these names of things you like, what is that? And you have no idea. But that is in our budget, and you'll be able to see that, our budget's online. It's also printed hard copies, and you'll see there's a very big section of glossary terms because again, there's such a special language of government language. But you're right, Councilwoman, that's absolutely an essential element you have to have. Otherwise, you can't really figure out what this is doing.
Thank you.
Hey, Councilwoman, I'll make sure that infrastructure is part of the glossary.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
The next slide. I know, I can see closer. Okay, it is up on the screen. What we did here, and I asked Frank to sort of say, okay, let's take from where we were in 1718, where we got our revenues, et cetera. Let's take us all the way down, and I'll have Frank walk us through, and we're going to... Basically, we'll probably say we're balanced budget. This'll sort of validate the spreadsheet. This is what I helped Frank to say. You walk me through and get me to where we started, where we are in 1819. And this is summary terms again, but it's going to get, so Frank, what do you want?
The purpose of this chart is to show you how we are with regards to the general fund, starting out this year, and how we'll end up next year with regards to the budget. First line, you know, basically, we go through what our beginning fund balance is at the beginning of the year. That's a 3.1 million. So what are, again, it's going back to the funding sources, funding uses. So what are our funding sources for this year? It's the beginning fund balance of the 3.1 million as well as the projected 1718 revenues. And that gives us a fund balance and revenue, funding source of 6.5 million for 1718.
And keep in mind, the fund balance includes our reserves in the general fund. That's why that number looks so big. It is, it is not that we're sequestering money away. It's that it includes reserve, unspent capital expenditure money. So there's a lot of things that we're talking about in there, which he has to, then he'll come back and system it after you take out here, to walk you through.
So taking away from, or deducting the 1718 projected expenditures from total fund source, which is fund balance and revenue, we can end of year fund balance available projected up at the 3.3 million.
And so what I want to point out there is, if you look at the second line down, projected revenues of 3.384, and then you look at the fourth line, projected expenditures 3.268, you should say, Steve, you're doing a good job, and you met your budget, and you get one check mark on your performance evaluation because our expenditures are less than our revenues, ongoing operational. And that's the important thing here that I want to point out, that our operational, as I say, that our operational revenues are less. That's a really big issue that we're not operating on one-time revenues to pay for ongoing expenses.
We wouldn't be here if we were. We wouldn't be here. If it wasn't like that.
So projected end of year 1718 fund balance available, 3.3 million. We do, as Steve mentioned, have to take back or deduct from that fund balance available what is being reserved or what is already designated. And that includes the emergency cash reserve, 1.5 million.
That's our reserve that we talk about so much that it's prescribed to set up.
Also designated is reserve for vehicle replacement, infrastructure, the GILPAR TV capital improvement, accrued leave related to employees, the California Joint Powers Insurance Association repayment, capital improvement, as well as PARs contribution.
What is the repayment for on the California Joint Powers?
I think that's part of, claims are, take longer sometimes than a year to settle, to be resolved. And so there's just a lot of timing issues, so fund balance is prepared to incorporate.
It's around, it's around the building. See the sign here, come through here, come through here, and walk straight through this door. Yeah, and then it's down the hallway. Come on, we want you to vote.
Down the hall?
Down the hall. Come on in. There you go. Yep, there you go, turn right.
Yeah, you did.
So that would basically reflect our reserves. If you, that grouping reflects our reserves.
Okay, so let's go back to definitions. Let's go back to infrastructure, $140,000. Do we have a breakdown of what that is?
That was money set aside for reserves, for infrastructure projects that we set aside in our budget last year for like sewer replacement or things down the road that we were intending to do.
Is it a break, is there a breakdown that?
That was a lump sum.
That's a lump sum amount. Okay, so there's no breakdown. That could be any sort of infrastructure program.
That infrastructure reserve and the capital improvement reserve later on further down are two key elements that we're going to have to deal with in balancing because we have the Mesa Henderson storm drain, which we're replacing or repairing. And in order to deal with those, we're going to have to use those reserves that we set aside.
Right, so that, this is where the definitions come in. Infrastructure, capital improvement. I've got 140 and 180, so the question comes from, should come from us. Why is it separated, which is fine, I understand why, because I understand the difference between the two. But what's it for? So what are we putting in capital, you know, what do we, why did we put $180,000 in a capital improvement? What were we buying?
We put in monies for, you remember, we talked about last year in our budget, two-year cycle for sewer and for storm drain and for streets. And we continued more on the street, but the sewer and storm drain, we put the planning money in the budget, and that was the carryforward for the sewer and storm drain. That's what we set them aside for. They are general fund discretionary revenues that do not have to be exclusively used for those. But those were designated because we were in a better financial position last year. With those, with that money, we had it available. So the council said, what those monies for, those projects?
So 180 for storm drains for?
Well, storm drains and, I don't know which one.
Just the categories.
Storm drains and sewer.
And sewer.
Yeah. And those were for the planning. The following four years, which would be this next year, would be, we were going to put larger amounts in there to deal with the actual projects.
But the 140 also could go to storm drains and sewer also.
You read my mind, and that's what we're going to do to get to our balance. That's how we're dealing with our budget.
I mean, it's kind of a little shell game, but it's kind of, it's the same.
Fast, we're comfortable, and that's exactly what we're talking about.
The infrastructure can include streets as well.
Thank you.
So you see it brought her carryforward down from Frank. We gave him 3.3 million, he's down to 1.2, saying we really have to spend. Although, you can go back to some of those other reserves you can imagine. We'll show you how we deal with those.
So again, getting to a funding source for 1819, we have a carryover fund balance of 1.2 million and then the projected revenue of almost 3.5 million. That'll give us 2018, 19, available spend, funding source of 4.7 million. However, with regards to general fund, our budget expenditures are 5 million. So that's where, you know, we come to an issue as to how do we make up that difference? And as shown here, and again, going back to those designated fund balance reserves, we're suggesting the use of the 140,000 infrastructure reserve as well as the 180,000 for the capital.
These are necessitated with the absence of FEMA money. This is what the impact we're going to see. We don't have FEMA money. If we had FEMA money, we wouldn't be touching those reserves. But since they're designated for capital improvements by the council in the past, I took that.
Well, that's what it goes for.
I made the interpretation that we should be putting it toward those projects. So these are the general, this would be the general fund contribution toward our capital projects. One of the things you will see is, we are not touching our general fund reserve of 1.5 million. So that's one of the priorities I am saying we're going to be careful there. In fact, the last item, we're adding $20,000, which is the percentage growth that the resolution calls for. So we'll be adding to our general fund cash reserve, the emergency cash reserve. So the 5.3 million and the 1.5, the 1.531 that's at the very top on the emergency cash reserve will become 1.55, if I'm correct. So we will be increasing to reserves. We will be using the reserves we set aside for infrastructure for exactly that, infrastructure.
But we're increasing our reserves by $19,000?
Yes.
Which is a far cry from the 100 grand that we historically have put in except for the last, the last year with the current council. Which is, $19,000 is nothing for the city of Villa Park. It's almost embarrassing. So maybe we could work on that.
Well, I think, I think I would agree, but when you have a $900,000 unplanned expenditure for Mesa Henderson storm drain that is almost entirely general fund, I would say...
I would agree with you for this year. Last year we didn't have, the year before, we didn't have that. We still put 20 grand in.
So I think the budget scenario for us, I'd like to say is a one-time kind of lip because we're sort of, I'm being less optimistic this year because we would like to talk about FEMA. So without the FEMA money, I think we have to be prepared to deal with it. So the best way to deal with it is to deal with money set aside. So I agree with you.
We need to wake up, FEMA's not going to pay us. I mean, that was, that was a dream.
Well, that was what they'd been giving us. We got that a year ago, and if words were worth money, we would have some.
They give it to us, we win the lottery.
So what we did then, so there you have basically, why we say without, the next word is different, wherever without. So what I asked Frank to do was, okay, now let's go back and answer some questions. What are the variances? What are we talking about here? Why are those numbers going up and down? So the next two pages will show us applying all those things we talked about, base level expenditures, whatever. I'll let Frank walk you through the revenues, and he'll talk you through the assumptions that we solidified here.
So looking at, you know, what we project as a budget and comparing it to 1718 actuals, projected actuals, with regards to revenues, we're looking at a projected 5.3% increase in sales tax, 4.7% increase in property tax. Some other smaller increases with regards to licenses and permits. Obviously, a decrease in intergovernmental. The special assessments, because it is a fixed charge per parcel, it's relatively flat.
Can we back up there, the 4.7? Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, was it last year the first time we went up 4%? Was it last?
Yes, or was that?
It was last year the first time, so historically, we've...
No, I think we did the...
I know you, I know you tried to get it up there, so we've always gone...
Let Bill finish his response, please.
We did the year before as well. It wasn't, really wasn't an issue last year. It was two years ago that we had the issue.
So we've always done it 2%, then we went to 4%.
No, 2% is what you're allowing.
No, I know, but the city did 2% on its budget historically. Then we went to 4%, and now we're at 4.7, which is huge.
Well, no, I disagree. My understanding on the past, the city always budgeted flat. Because I had this argument when I first came on here that you should take it up at least 2%. You know it's going to go up 2%. But many of the councilmen argued that it always had this flat. And the first time it was not flat was when I got them to take it up to 4%.
Yeah, well, that wasn't until two years ago, because, yeah, we did have a lot of agreement. 4.7% is aggressive.
Well, again, that's what I project for 1819 versus what I project actuals for this year. So, you know, I do see it, you know, a 4.7 based on the assumption of a 3.8% increase in property tax for 1819.
So this is based on Chapman University and the county's assessor's projections. So we're not, and he's underestimated, he's conservatively backing off their projections. So they have, in my recollection, the last four or five years, the county assessor has underestimated the growth or the changes. So he's been pretty on track, Frank, because Frank actually worked in property tax, I can tell you where I am. But I think what we're saying here is, it's a realistic revenue source, that we're being consistent with what best indicators are showing right now.
It's aggressive for the city historically, if you look at it. Because we were always... Yeah, that is, we'll move on, but that, I'm not comfortable with that large increase. But let's move on now.
Well, again, it does just reflect what I knew is projected for 1819 versus what the estimated end of year will be percentage of income. And with the budgeted 1819 property tax, it utilizes a 3.8% increase.
But again, that's, you're right, it's aggressive more than 2%. It's aggressive more than zero. You cannot budget, but you're going to get the revenue. That's the reality.
But if you look historically, Villa Park has had 6%, 7% increase year to year.
I know, I know the projections are, and I mean, I'm not, I'm not an economist, but I know that they're projecting 7% or 8% for a city like Irvine this year coming up. So they're projecting very aggressive on the assessor, and they do the tax rules. I mean, this is their way to, so we're not taking stuff, these are well-founded numbers, we believe. So again, it's a policy, you're correct, it's a policy, Councilwoman, that the city can say, we want to budget zero.
I just want, well, we didn't budget zero, but I just wanted to bring it to the attention of you. We always kept it at 2%. Yeah, that's what we did.
No, you didn't keep it at 2%, you had it as flat. Okay, let's go on to the next.
Okay, so, so I'll take expenditures, I guess you want me to?
Sure.
Frank and I scripted well. Okay, so the personnel services, it's a 1.9% total decrease. There's a couple reasons for that. One, but we have built in there, so we, I asked, you know, what are the variances? We built AmeriCool last year that we didn't fully spend out, that I didn't fully spend. The council said the same thing the last year, they gave me a dollar percent, a 5, I think it was a 5%. 3%. And I didn't use it all, and then Frank is paid less than his predecessor. So we're saving some money on those types of things, so.
As well as retirement, being in PEPRA, it reduces the contributions as well.
Frank and I are deals.
Yes, you are.
No, I mean that because what we are, the retirement calculation, both of us being, even though we're longtime employees, we are now considered new members of joining. So we're at the lowest possible percentage retirement contribution rate for employees based on the PEPRA legislation, whereas our predecessors would have been the longer term. So we, our retirement contributions are less for us. Even though the salaries may be closer left or the same, our actual retirement is less because the accrued liability is less. So we are putting in at 5% AmeriCool, again, that's a consideration. Retirement, you'll see there's an increase, and the increase there is a, we're at PEPRA, but the calpers has lowered the discount rate, and Bill Underwood can correct me if I'm wrong, but it was at 7. but it was at 7.5 and I believe they're going to 7.4, somewhere in that range. So when they do that, that means the amount of money that our investments gain is less over the balance of the years. So then the employer's share, the county, the city's contribution has to increase to pay for the obligation. The obligation remains. It's just how you're paying for it. So when they reduce the discount rate or what they're earning on their investments, which they are, there is talk of CalPERS going even further down. You know, realistically, they roll the average over five years, I believe. And they're realistically talking as low as 6%. I don't know if they get there. That's politically, that would very honestly bankrupt a lot of cities because those cities' contribution rates would skyrocket immediately. We are in a much better position because we have eight employees we pay. Eight employees is a far cry, two of those being in PEPRA, actually, three of them. Three of our eight are in PEPRA at the lowest possible rate here. So anyway, we have, so our retirement rate reflects a increase. The code enforcement, we had additional eight hours. And in those eight hours to continue that, we, I had him, I had him say, to continue that's $936. So I said, how much is it costing us to do? Then one of the things we talked about is, I said, you know, look, and we talked about this, what is your staffing pattern, et cetera? Right now, coverage sometimes can be an issue. So what I've done is I said, look, we have a couple of part-time positions, things like that. I don't need to add positions. I don't want to add positions because I don't believe. But I do believe we need to add hours to adjust some of those to deal with our workload. And I think there are some things that we're not getting to that I would like to have gotten to or going to. Business licensing, things like that, that we just simply don't have the hours in a day to do. So what I've done is I talked to Frank and that would be the full cost, $34,000, to increase those hours with no additional positions. That's the full cost because if you increase a dollar, for instance, for a salary, you also have a benefit attached to that. So that would be an all-inclusive $34,000. Again, that's a discretionary item that the council can say, no, you don't want to do that or you don't want to do the maripole increase. That's totally up to you. The, what we've done then below that is go into maintenance op. Are there any questions on personnel services?
No, I had one. The staff augmentation, where are you going to augment the staff?
Basically, I've got a reception person that's working 30 hours right now.
Okay.
And I would like to have that person working 40 hours to allow us to have full-time reception and duties. So if somebody walks in the door, on Fridays, they don't have to deal with somebody else. And right now, it's just disjointed, a little bit disjointed because candidly, at times I'm relying on an intern to provide coverage. While that, they are very high-quality interns, I'm very pleased with who we have on board. It is an intern and at any time they can walk in and say, well, I'm changing my class schedule, I'm done.
Yeah.
And I don't want that. I want somebody who has an investment in being here.
Okay.
So I think that's my reasoning. Again, it's not adding any more personnel, it's adding more hours.
Okay.
That's, that's the. So maintenance operations, that will be the ongoing day-to-day business. So there is a 15.5% increase. So where does that happen? What's going on there? So that's what we're identifying here. The sheriff, this is where you're going to start seeing the things that we talked about in May, coming back and saying, this is the cost that they're incorporating and what they're going to be. For incidents, starting off with the sheriff's contract, it's 141,000. And Frank and I looked at the number and said, you know what, I think we've overstated. That was the original number. We negotiated it down. The actual increase is 121,000, the one that the council approved. So I didn't have Frank to go back and rechange it. Well, it's reflected in the budget, but for purposes you understand here, we've been working on these spreadsheets for a while and we need to, you know, we're catching up. So that's 121,000. Animal care is going up $3,800, $3,900. And that was something which is approved by the council, both the first two. We talked about the election expense at the last council, at the last workshop, $7,500. That estimate provided by the registrar of voters, not us, and that's associated with the November election. Not what we're having right now. We have no expense related to that. This is because we're running a local municipal election. We have three council seats up in November, $7,500. There's a cost that we have, including publications, balance statements, all those documents, et cetera. We have to include. Again, the council approved incorporating into that. They had calling that election last month, so they'll be held November 6th. Brea IT, we talked about transitioning our IT services to using Brea IT, which we feel is a, Bill provided onsite staff presence. So many times you all have experienced calling this up, say, I got problems with my phone or I can't log in. We would have four hours a week of an IT person available to us to come onsite, work on things. If we don't use it, we don't worry about it. But one of the things is, is that's an issue for me because, you know, I get on a call, you know, if you guys call me and say I need some help on something, I literally have to get on and get a tag, a ticket number and wait.
Does that happen, does that happen often with the council? I've never, I've never called asking.
It happens for staff, can't believe. More often, like Bill Terrance will call me, he's saying, I'm working on something, I can't get on the computer. How do I get on?
Yeah, I'm here.
And it's like, okay, well, let me, you know, let's call in and do it. So I've had a situation where I couldn't get to my email. I'm watching it on the screen. I'm looking, it's there, but I can't, it won't let me get into it. So I was on the phone for four hours one time, waiting and waiting and waiting to get it. Because I, once you get on there, you can't wait till, you've got to get it done. So that's something, if I could have somebody in here to help us deal with it. Just the other day, Eileen came in and she could not turn on her computer. She couldn't access the internet. Well, I'm sorry, the computer turned on, the internet couldn't access. So, you know, eventually we were able to work it out with our IT guys, but it's just frustrating to just have somebody.
You need to have somebody there.
One of the things too is I'm putting in, so that's $7,100 we got an estimate from. One of the things that we talked about, it's drought resistance, but it's also, there are some projects that I want to move forward with for $15,000. We need to do some projects on our green belts. Their entire need, some of them are drastically in need. We have money budgeted for $50,000 for Wanda. This is another $15,000. Specifically, the project I'm talking about is on Taft Avenue coming west on Cannon. If you look to the north side of it, it is dirt, dirt all the way along that. Now, what's funny is in the median, the city spent money and made the median look really crazy. But if you look on the right, as long as you look to the left, you're great. If you look to the right, you think you're not Villa Park. You think you're in some other area.
So it's on the north side of Taft?
North side of Taft, between Cannon and.
It's at Parker Larson. It's right around Parker Larson.
It's behind Parker Larson. It's our green belt.
It's there. Well, Parker Larson's our streets too, but they have a gate there.
That is what that would.
It looks horrible.
Yeah, it looks, it's dirt. It used to have trees, but those trees have died off, the watering system broke.
No, that's not, partly not the city's fault. The residents years back wanted to maintain that voluntarily. And what happens when you have residents voluntarily do things, they get tired of it or they move. And that's a result.
The greens don't get put in right.
That's the, that's what happened.
So what $15,000 will do, will put five trees and drought-resistant plants, that's why, drought-resistant shrubbery around them that would look nice along there and would fix all the sprinkler systems along the way. So that would involve minimal maintenance, ongoing, but also improve the. And I will say that anymore, if you go in the morning, that's a primary entry point to Villa Park. If you go on Taft to Cannon, that's really heavily used. So that's one of the things I think we can do for $15,000 and I, that's a project I think we should be moving on. So I'm, you know, we need to start parcelling off and dealing with some of these medians and green belts and things like that. And I think 15 is a reasonable approach to go there. So I put that in there at my recommendation. We talked about computer upgrades. We talked about $5,000 is not much, but it'll buy us approximately two stations, two workstations, which is a big deal because some of these computers have not been replaced in five to seven years. And if you know what life expects of computers, that's pretty impressive to say that they've gone this far. So that would buy us two, two computer stations, basically, including the screens and things like that. So we would, we would do that. I don't want to do all that at once. There's a fault with doing everything at once because you end up, everything goes down, you got problems. You got, you transition and that's sort of, everyone sort of says that in the IT world. Don't do it all at once. You'll be sorry you did. Do it incrementally, get, bring things up to speed and rotate them. So by the time you get through them, you can continue at a reasonable amount and not zap as a major problem. So.
You also have $3,000 in, you have three seats available here up on the council and there's $3,000 in computer expense?
Yeah, but that would be part of our operating.
Okay, all right.
Home litigation, we talked about that. There's additional expense we're going to have. And just as a general informational, the mayor and I have been asked to go to a Judge Carter's court on June 13th. We're not taking our city attorney, but.
Why not?
Huh?
Why not?
Because they were not invited and I'm not, there's no, we're not entered into litigation at this point. I don't want, we don't want, we're not. We're just invited to be observers and that's all.
And the mayor's going to? We voted to have you go.
I believe the judge asked the mayor and I.
The judge asked for both city managers and mayors.
Well, he asked. That doesn't mean you have to go. It's not an order.
It's above my pay grade, decided the mayor goes.
I was invited and I'm going. There's no cost to the city on that.
Oh, well, it would be nice. Is, this is the first time we, is that the memo that you sent us today?
We received it, no, that, we received just yesterday. I believe, yes, I did. I did. I think I sent it out at this point. I notified you that we received.
You sent it out to us. I don't recall when, but you did send it.
I sent it out. The judge sent it out and I just received the court order yesterday.
It's not a court order. It's in the court order. It's requesting that cities go. It is not a court order. We are not part of this lawsuit. So I want to make sure that the public knows that. He invites cities that are not involved in the lawsuit to come.
Correct. Correct. Plan check, we talked in our May meeting, sorry. Plan check, we talked about increasing because we've got an increasing number of projects that we want to encourage. Because we do not want project city plan check when we can get them moving and the residents deserve to have things turned around fairly quickly. So we put $2,000 in. I think that's a reasonable, that's not a big dollar amount. I think that keeps things moving for us and is a reasonable. Councilman, this is, the next item is something you'll remember we put in.
Yes.
Auto check signing, $10,000 was a ballpark back of the envelope estimate that we heard on a webinar of what a city our side would spend or something like that. Again, this is a discretionary item with council, but this is a response to the main direction from the council that we received from council.
Can you, can you go over that again? Because that's a large dollar amount.
Auto check signing would be an automated process for signing checks. As opposed to right now, we do a manual system. We do accounts payable on two, twice a month at least. Frank's pretty aggressive on something. He does three months, three times a month when he aggressively pursues, but he's paying our bills.
Thank you.
Doing those, we issue checks. Right now, we do them the old-fashioned way. We sign them as. What this would allow us to do would be assign approval online and issue them online as opposed to printing. We print them out now and sign them manually. This would be an automated process that would do it for us and would speed up the process and we would be able to enter it in and he could tie that to his accounting system and account payable expenditure, like journal vouchers if you will. So that's what the plan is to do and I think was suggested by Councilman Nelson.
I think that that is a great program if we didn't need $10,000 in other areas. I mean, when we drive down our major street of Catella and every planter box is broken in the city of Villa Park and we can't afford to replace those planter boxes that are just concrete, I think explaining to the residents that the council doesn't want to sign a check or the city manager doesn't want to sign a check and we want to buy this extra module is not going to look very well. Because I've done that and it doesn't take that long. Although I think that our business should have it, but to have a $10,000 expense when, you know, coming down our street, we haven't spent any money at all. I think we're going to hear a little bit about this and we'll move on, but I just wanted to make those comments. That's all.
Yeah, I appreciate that. It's, this is some of the direction that we received to incorporate. This is why we're, this is what we're getting, you know, putting out there so you guys can see. The general plan update, recall that we have the general plan that we did, we have to do. You'll see in June 26th, we'll be doing an update to the general plan. We went out to bid, received two bids, one for $18,000 and one for $32,000. So needless to say, we'll be recommending the $18,000. So when I told Frank to put $20,000, I was off, but not by all that much. It was 18 and change. So we're close there. But that's going to be a mandated expense that we're going to have to put in. The budget contingency is the item that both Councilwoman Fasenelli and Councilman Nelson indicated last month that we should have in there for us to spend. And Frank and I made the unsuccessful argument that we should not put it in there. It is in there and it is at a flat amount of $150,000.
I like, I'll accept a 3% versus 5%. We suggested 5%, but you put, you put it as 3%.
Yeah, I think we tried to get, we tried to get as close as we can to a happy medium. Anyway, the engineering, that you recall, we increased the hours of engineering that we have going in, that was $30,000. And yes, we, and one thing you would request, Councilwoman, was an accounting of the projects and things we're doing. So Akram is pulling that together among other things he's pulling together right now. But that's, that's in there and you'll be able to see exactly what, yeah.
Yeah, my concern there also is going forward, and you touched on it, that we, we're going to have to use the money that we originally, the council originally budgeted for those special infrastructure projects. And now those are going to be put on the back burner because the money needs to be used, you know, for the storm drain. So we may not, we may need a little bit more engineering, but maybe not $30,000.
Yeah, and we, we're built on an as.
As needed.
Needed basis.
Correct.
So we have $30,000 as my maximum obligation, maximum obligation amount of target for me.
Right, it's not what you have to spend.
I understand.
So I, we use them. If I use $5,000, I'm happy.
But we're using them right now.
Right now, we're close to.
Yeah, we're close to max.
But we've got a number, as we talked about, the number of RFPs and things we're doing, which we talked about. Those, those are documentations right now that we're using that engineering to allow us to get done and then published and forward. Council travel, we budgeted $18,500, which is consistent, is a flat amount this year based on our discussion. So now we should talk about the capital outlay equipment. Oh. Why do we have $30,000 in personnel? That was, oh, you're right. That was an equipment piece that we have to replace on the side of the street, light controller.
Not that one. Let's just budgeting for any anticipated equipment placements.
What are you guys referring to? Forgive us. What are you?
I'm sorry, I was looking at the capital outlay equipment. It says 36.1% increase, which is an $8,000 more increase.
Okay, thank you.
And that is a budgeted based on potential need. It is not an exact figure. It's what we're, not for anything specific is what we're doing. Capital projects is where you're going to start to see the big, you know, the big issues. And these are, these are a combination of carryforwards and new projects. The Mesa Henderson Storm Drain is a $950,000 project out of the general fund. If we didn't have that $950,000, we would have money in the third that we may have. But that's, that's a big hit. So we're dealing with that in a very different, like we say, that's why we're dealing with it, taking the $320,000 of the capital reserve otherwise. The street rehab of $925,000 involves the project that is a rebudget of the current project.
The 950 is, it's 950 less the 320.
Well, the 320 is covering multiple capital projects. We're having to cover our capital project in total. We're having to use that. Some of these are special eligible and some are not others. But we're using the capital, we're using that 320. You could say that, yes. If you wanted to apply it specifically to Mesa Henderson, you could say that. But we also have additional monies in the street rehab and projects, et cetera. Yes, but you're, you're correct. We're using the rehab, the reserve of 320,000 and you could say it's directly applied to Mesa Henderson now.
That's what we said before. I just want to make sure that, and I think that her concern is that we're consistent on that.
Yeah. The street rehab is $925,000 is a rebudget. Now, one of the things that we've talked about is, you know, we are not, by setting 320,000 aside and using that, we're not doing something this year. However, in our position next year, I went back, Akram, Frank and I went over the budget. We believe that we'll be able to apply next, starting next year and beyond, every year going forward, 500, at least 500,000 toward street repair alone exclusively. And that's a combination of measure and funds and match requirements that we would have. So while it may be a million dollars at a base, we believe we can get 500,000 moving forward. So the project, as if you're thinking about the projects from a practical standpoint, the project work we're doing now that was just awarded in May will be, starting work, you're going to start seeing work in June, July and August to be completed. We would then sort of gear up for the next project to be spent in the following year of 1920 of 500,000. So the months of actually delaying a project, we're going to lose about a year of project because of the Mesa Henderson, of the, the street projects. Then we're going to be applying money again and getting back going, so 1920. So there'll be construction going on. So there'll be construction going on, but it's not as continual as we would have otherwise been doing, if that makes sense. The council room, I'm sorry, the DG Trail Repair is a rebudget. That's fee money, Q and D money that they've given us. And in fact, a lot of that work is being done as we speak or nearly done, uh, although Verizon is digging up what we just did. And we're having to go back and deal with Verizon because one of the residents called me and they, they're digging up to put in their, on their easement. So they're, they're, they will be restoring it to where it was, but it's kind of disheartening to see the work we just did on the trails getting undone and having to be redone. But it is still be a... They'll restore it and Verizon will restore it. Councilroom upgraded. Our PEG funds that we specifically get, those are cable monies that the cable companies pay for having a franchise. So that's the money we'll be using to upgrade and even putting larger screens and all that good stuff. So those are deserting. You can't use anything except for automation purposes. And we believe that automation, as far as telecast, probably make the most sense because that's where we're getting revenue. So that the public will have a better experience of watching it and streaming it. We have budgeted, um, $40,000 that we've talked about, and I think this is the mayor's issue. In the past, there are potholes and things like that that we need to continually upgrade and do. So we are budgeting and continuing to budget $40,000 for that purpose. Because we believe there are still going to be, you know, potholes and things like that you're going to come across. Even with the street repairs, projects that we're doing, rains come, you've got a project, you've got to deal with it. We have a collapse or something that happens, we unanticipated. $40,000 is what we have traditionally budgeted for the year, and that's where we keep it flat. Handicapped access is an issue that came up in our May meeting. So what we've set aside is $40,000. That will not accomplish all the handicap maintenance that we have to do in the area. It will allow us to start and initiate some of the capital, some of the handicap. Again, this is a discretionary item with the council. They don't want to, you know, to start that effort.
What, um, of the three schools that are not going to be significantly touched by construction, so everything but the high school, which obviously is slated for significant construction in the future, of the three schools, the two elementary and, uh, middle school, how much, um, of that $40,000 will get us handicapped access in and around those schools and the affected streets? And I'm not looking, um...
It's not going to accomplish a lot of...
Is it just planning money or is it actual?
It, it will actually be going to, I'd say, brick and mortar, cement.
Okay.
And you've got a design, but you have to put the pegs in there, and you have to do a number of things as well, grading, and there's a number of issues that you have to do. It isn't just tearing it up and adding. So to add a handicap access, you have, uh, you know, you have a little bit more. It becomes pretty expensive to do each intersection. So I, I don't have a ballpark number, but somewhere in my, my range, I want to say, probably looks, uh, to be the range of anywhere from $5,000 to $10,000 to do a single intersection.
What's the significance, um, councilman, between handicap access on our private streets versus a school around the school?
It's used by children. It's used by, um, young and old. It's used by as many members of, I just say the vast majority of, um, the people that live in Villa Park. It's important on, obviously on private streets, but I think if we're going to start somewhere, we have to make sure that we put money where we have the highest amount of foot traffic, both young and old. We have, uh, handicapped seniors. We have moms walking their children in strollers. I think what we're trying to accomplish, frankly, one of the reasons why this is so important to me, we're getting the biggest bang for the buck here. And hopefully, we're also looking at the liability piece. If there's one place where we're going to get hit with liability, it's where you have major foot traffic. I think it's kind of self-evident.
Well, I think that would be a point of discussion to the residents, um, as to whether, if we're going to put handicap access, I guarantee you, if we take a poll and we talk to the residents, they're going to want it around their house because they have, you know, people who are in wheelchairs or have handicap, and they're not going to want it for the schools that the majority of this council constantly harps and says the majority of the people go there, don't even live here. So we're going to spend money on, by your own definition, the, the people who are going to utilize these handicap access are people who don't live here.
I disagree with that analysis, but thank you.
So we need to decide where we're going to spend our money. And if there's a specific place that we maybe have residents that have requested it, that we would start there if it's legally available to do. But I see this as opening a can of worms and having, you know, that same attorney who came in here and attacked the gas station. And the minute we start publicly doing this, we're going to have every corner handicap access. And great, that would be wonderful. That would be great. That would certainly, you know, assist my family. But guess what? The reality is, we can't. That's $40,000. That's, we don't have that kind of money to do that. I mean, we just don't. The schools have handicap access, you know, access. If the streets are being redone, the streets are going to be, uh, a little safer. They're not going to be potholed. I understand that. And there are grants out there where, when we put the sidewalks for the safe walk to school, the grants pay for that that we can apply for. And maybe that's the, maybe that's where we need to go down. But to take $40,000 out of the budget in a time that, you know, we're looking at a million-dollar storm drain. And one thing that's not budgeted here is we do have a lawsuit looming. And that's something we can't talk about here, but we don't have anything budgeted for that. So those are my comments.
I appreciate your pontification, but I think that, uh, uh, different minds would, uh, would disagree with you. And I think our city attorney would disagree with you. I think the, uh, the members of our community would strongly disagree with you. And frankly, the visitors that come to our community, um, have a vested interest as well. I think that, uh, we're going to get the biggest bang for the buck here. This is a, a starting point. And we're going to, uh, work off of what we, we have and then try to improve upon that. And hopefully, eventually, probably, uh, not in, in the time that I'm going to be on council, but in each successive year, we try to address this issue. I think it's incredibly important. Thank you.
Yeah, personally, I think it's a matter of kindness to our residents that, uh, you know, all of our residents, not just those who are fully ambulatory, should be able to, uh, walk through or travel throughout our community and be able to access it. I know Joe's wife accesses by wheelchair and is unable to, uh, travel on sidewalks. Has to travel on, uh, the traveled way, uh, to get to and from where she, she likes to go. There are other residents that are seniors that have difficulty navigating, uh, our own curbs. So I think it's a matter of, uh, being kind to all of our residents, making sure that we don't discriminate against them and make sure that they have the same access that those of us who are fully ambulatory have.
Well, I have handicapped relatives also, Bob. So I, I think that you're, you're speaking as though some of us don't have any idea what you're talking about.
No, I wasn't.
But you removed the bike trails around the school. We had bike lanes at Serrano. So you did not take the residents and the younger generation into account then. It didn't matter because you wanted the bike lane removed, okay, around your home on Serrano. So you're talking from both sides now. So I appreciate the handicap access, but I also appreciate the bike lanes. But we got to make up our mind. It's about money. And I'm seeing a ton of projects here, and there, there just isn't enough money here. And there's some expenses that are not in here. For some reason, we're, for some reason, we're ignoring that.
I don't think we're ignoring a thing. I think that you're putting out a false narrative with all due respect to a potential piece of litigation. And I think it's inappropriate to do that. I think we need to move on. Let our talented staff finish their proposal. We can discuss this further. Thank you.
Steve?
The next item we talked about is our business licenses and, and our building permits, which we'd like to automate. We talked about getting our system upgraded. So right now, to get a building permit, you have to come into the building here. You literally have to come in and be offered three days a week. And you can't even know how much it is unless you come in and calculate it for you. We have, there's no automation to that. There's no building check online. You can't see where your status is of the things. So we want to upgrade that, and that's, that's a $40,000 investment, but on that one, that's a pretty reasonable, we talked about, that's actual estimate. That's a pretty reasonable long-term that would suffice, move us up to a whole nother world, uh, where we need to be. This would enable people, residents, to be able to apply for building permits when they need to, uh, to see where the status is, to schedule appointments online for building, you know, building inspections, a lot of those things, and to see status for issues that, you know, Bill could enter, or inspector could go out, for instance, enter notes from the field, or he chooses, list up PS and iPad, up there, he types in, X, Y, and Z need to be repaired. We'll check in three days, or we'll, we'll check back, or we'll have contact when ready. Those kinds of things can be online. If someone can check those, you know, because I don't know about having done work, sometimes building inspectors come when you're not there. And this is sort of a, this is a process. So I think we need to get there, and I think that's, that's, this is money well spent on my... We talked about that again, um, as part of the, uh, May budget process.
On our, um, building permits, is that self-supported? In other words, is there... Okay. So would the automation be something that we could, uh, fold into the building license and building...
We would have to change our fees if we were going to do that. Our fees are not billed to address the additional cost at this point. We sort of make do-it fees are based on actuals, uh, and we could incorporate that. But again, to the extent you do that, that's retroactive. Because if you upgrade your system, it's an upfront expense, and it pays back over years. It does, it's not... Cash flow, you're going to need the $40,000 upfront to pay for it. But we could very well do that if you're willing to, uh, address the fees and say that we want to incorporate that, and if that's directed.
Well, if we're going to try to keep the, the permit system revenue neutral...
That, that would be a way to go with this. But again, it's, it's something we would need to let you to share. We would come back with a fee adjustment and we start collecting in and over course. So there's a return on investment, and whatever that would be, I kept, I was not having, trying to calculate what the cost, you know, the number of inspections per year and all that kind of...
Well, maybe you could come back to us and, and give us an understanding of what that would entail.
When we, when we come back with that, well, I mean, we did not go out for bid. We took verbal comments about what it would be. If we actually did this on a $40,000, we'd go out for a bid. We would come back with you with details. We would come back to you with a potential fee address issue. So it would be a full package.
Okay.
But I think what we want to do is we want to start moving in that direction. I think this is, would be money well spent, and we can do that in the next 12 months. PARs, and I, I believe, uh, this is something that we talked about in the past. This was supposed to be, uh, $100,000 was the plan over the next, over four years. We have already made the first $100,000 installment and signed that agreement. This would be for year two. So that is built in as a planned expenditure from our general fund. I think that's particularly prudent, given potential, uh, discount rate adjustments like helpers. If we are going to be in a position to address those things, we have to take those kinds of prudent investments. I, I noticed some cities, I was watching, uh, for lack of better things to do, the city council the other night was adding money to their, to their trust because of the very same reason. They anticipate rate increases in years three, four, and five, so they're adding money. So that would be our continued recommendation to stick with our original plan of $100,000. The next item is the increase to general fund reserve. This is consistent with our city council resolution in anticipation of the council, of the councilwoman's question. We can change that resolution anytime we want to.
Not with this council, we can't.
If the potential exists, if the council majority would like to do that, they could change the resolution. But the $19,175 is consistent with the resolution as worded, based on the calculation. Because I said to Frank, Frank, it's 19, you're sure you know, I calculated this is what it is, or did they contribute the increase? That's where we need to... So, um...
Can I request that you provide us with the history of, um, the addition? I know that Michelle had a spreadsheet.
Yes.
Uh, and I, if you probably still have access to it, if you could update that and send that to the council, I'd appreciate that.
Steve, forgive me, maybe you're going to get to it, but where do we have, you mentioned $50,000 for the Wanda Green Belt, which obviously needs some work, but $50,000 seems like a significant number in one fell swoop. And what's that addressing and what line is that on?
$50,000, okay. What we dressed here and what you're seeing here is variances from existing budgets.
Okay.
So we talked about why did our budget change or go up and down? $50,000 was in our budget last year. It's going to be carried forward, and we're putting $50,000 in the budget this year. There's been no specific plan or design is in the budget. I can get the line item if you need it, but it is in there. I believe if you go down the street, you're going to start seeing that it's rounding up as the weather warms. And it's, it's not all the grass is dying. It's doing, we're going to... My belief is because of our light rainfall this year, we are probably going to, and I don't want to speak on turn, uh, for the water district, but I would anticipate statewide drought conditions being reinforced again this summer. In which case, it's probably prudent at some point that we start thinking about doing some, something to the green belt that's primarily grass. I've seen legislation, draft legislation, that says that there is no, grass is no longer being allowed on green belts unless it's for, um, particular reasons. And I, I don't have it off the top of my head, but they, they, for cosmetic reasons, which that would apply to, for instance, because there's no necessity to have grass there, they won't allow you to have grass there. So we're going to have to do something potentially there or let it die out.
Right. Um, where I'm going with this is have we changed out the, the irrigation system to a, um, high-efficiency system?
I...
We did. Prior to you coming.
Is it, is it in total changed out? Okay. Do we have a cost on, on what it would be to do?
It did to be a fairly minimal expense, but one of my concerns is if we're going to do something drought tolerant, I don't want to replace, spend anything. I don't want to spend a penny if we're going to change this and let it all die out and put something else in there.
It's all weed.
Right.
It's not even grass anymore.
A lot of it, you know, that, that being said, it is, to me, it seems like a, uh, sort of a limited value expenditure to change out. If we say, yes, Steve, go ahead and start spending some of those to put something drought tolerant, drought tolerant. Then I, we'd rather use that money for that upgrade or change, if you will, than having to spend to maintain something that isn't, um, probably going to ever show the results that we want to see. We're only restricted to two days' length of watering. So whether that be, um, whether that be under the drip system or not, you're not going to get the kind of green lush grass that you've had there in the past.
Well, I, I don't think that unfortunately, green lush, lush grass is in our future. I think that more of a, a, a natural planting with a, a natural type landscape is, is in, uh, well, number one may be mandated. Number two, uh, is in the best interests of, of our taxpayers and, uh, at the same time, addressing some, some issues. Uh, I'm just concerned about $50,000 towards that one project in that one part of the community when we do have other, um, needs across the community. And on the heels of the comments about $19,175, I would be okay with putting a significant majority of, of that, um, in some shell game way of moving the money around, um, away from Wanda. A portion, not all of it, um, and giving a, a larger reserve increase if there's a mechanism to do that.
So you want to remove the only open space we have, not improve it, when the community, every month, is harping about putting money back into some sort of beautification. This has been on the books forever. Is there a reason why you want that part of town to look so ugly? Because if there is, it would be a good time to tell us.
Huh? I don't know. Anybody on this council wants any part of the city to look ugly?
Okay, I want to, because I'd like, when you have dead grass and you have walls that have deteriorated, and that is what people see when they enter the city of Villa Park, that is our entrance. And that's what you see. I'm not understanding. We don't have a park. People could walk that trail. You already closed off the city by closing the gates down there. And now you don't want us to have a nice area down there to walk? There is a bike trail that goes all the way down to Chapman. People don't walk in, in that part of town. It's not nice. They walk on the lemon trail, though. That's pretty. But at the beginning, they don't walk. So let's consider that. That's our largest piece of unused land that we have.
So, Councilman, you asked what, sorry, what would $50,000? Go back to a discussion we had earlier where I'd mentioned that the north side of Taft, between Cannon and Parker, will be $15,000 to plant five trees and plants.
Right.
In that stretch. Wanda is a much, much larger... So proportionally, if you're thinking, what will that get me? $15,000 are what percentage of $50,000 is added? A third of the $50,000 would only cover five trees and plants and sprinklers and, you know, addressing all that to change all that around. So that's sort of just, if you could extrapolate to give some idea of what, what, uh, $50,000 will not do that whole stretch.
Oh, I'm well aware it won't. Oh, I'm well aware it won't do the whole thing. I recall when the prior council was lambasted, for lack of a better word.
Actually, to councilmen.
Just absolutely harangued, because there was discussion of a bocce ball court and expenditures in excess of $500,000, which obviously were ridiculous and not in the best interest of Villa Park residents, and the council was made very well aware of that. So I'm aware of kind of the magnitude of the history. I'm just trying to make sure that we act in the best interest of all of Villa Park. And I agree, something's got to be done there. It's just a question of how much and how long a period of time, and have we leveraged all of our resources to do that? So, but I appreciate that. Thank you for your comments.
So kind of moving forward, the items on balancing strategies, the keys we've already hit, and I'll speak down here a little bit. The $320,000, the two reserves are being used as part of the Mesa, you know, for the Mesa Henderson storm drain. That's $320,000, so two that's infrastructure and the capital improvement reserves, which were set aside for infrastructure capital improvements. Then the other item we have here, and this is a discussion we had, and I highlighted specifically because I want to make sure the council is well aware of the, I have had contacts with one councilperson since we had the May hearing, a budget hearing, and we had the Heather Scravens from the ACC came here. Only one councilman has, councilperson has expressed any sort of opinion or position one way or another since that meeting. So I have not added the ACC OC membership back in at that point. So I'm highlighting it.
Why did we take it out?
It was out in our, we had it recommended to take out, and I had some concerns at the time.
Right. But I didn't agree to take it out.
May, I had it recommended that we take out. You recall, if you go back to your notes, there was an item.
You made that recommendation, and I support that recommendation.
Yeah, and so did I.
And I.
I don't support it at all, only by the fact that I asked her to come here to speak, and all three of you didn't ask her one question.
Candidly, candidly, with all due respect, Deanna, you know, setting aside the political theater that's been going on here tonight, they have not been acting in the best interest of a lot of cities. They have some very talented people and some good people that volunteer their time, but some of the stuff they've been doing is bordering on legislation and public policymaking. That's not their role. Their role is advisory, their role is not being public policymakers from the standpoint of elected officials, and they're taking it a step too far. This discussion has been had with you, you're well aware of what's going on here, and to say that somehow, some way, you're not aware and that there's some big surprise is just not contrary, is contrary to fact.
Well, I'm not quite sure what you just said, but what I said is she came here, and not one councilman sitting to the right of me asked a question, asked what policies they were changing, why they had changed their business plan. You didn't care. You didn't ask. You don't know where the future's going. I don't care whether, I don't care whether or not you keep them or not, quite frankly, because I'm going to go to their meetings, the city's going to pay for me to go to their meetings. I hope to God the mayor's going to go to their meetings, because we are an Orange County city. We are not an LA city. We are not a Democratic city either. We are, we are a Republican city.
And that's the problem, is that they are, they are stark.
And this is a Republican, I'm speaking.
Let her finish.
Thank you.
So.
Thank you.
The fact that we brought the association here, you didn't ask her any questions. Your agenda was set to remove us from that, and that's fine. We will remain with the other, what is that, California Independent Cities, which is a Democratic, very liberal association. And I hope that the councilmen here will continue to associate with Orange County cities, who have the same beliefs that the majority of our voters do. And what I'm afraid of is I am truly seeing a shift here, that we are not looking at our conservative Orange County cities and not paying attention to what's going on. This organization allows us to do that. Those are my comments.
With all due respect, nothing could be further from the truth. And your voting record and your grandstanding for Democratic liberal causes is self-evident. The comment that somehow, some way, that the gentleman on my left and on my, on my right are anything but conservative in their points of views is absolutely inappropriate, and certainly my own. But setting aside that, the discussion about ACC OC is that they are overstepping their role. That's the issue. And by spending $5,800 of valuable taxpayer money that could be put on, towards other projects or other initiatives, conservative initiatives, things that will functionally help this city, is my concern, and only my concern. Thank you.
Mayor, you did say something I'd like you to expand on, that I'm grandstanding on my Democratic civil causes. If I've done something like that for this city, I would truly appreciate you saying that. What have we done?
Deanna, this is not a discussion between you and me. This is about the budget.
Yeah, let's, let's focus.
Let's move on.
That's a, I think that's an individual discussion that you two can have.
Actually, it's not, because that was the reason.
Let's move on for the, to the.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, but this is the reason why I didn't want this to be taken out of the budget.
Okay.
So I'd like to know the reason.
And.
Why, why you're, in essence, the councilman.
Do you care to answer or not?
I've already answered it.
Okay. So I think you've received your response, so.
Thank you for not answering.
Okay. Let's go on.
With that being said, the budget, as we would present it now, includes these changes, et cetera. We are balanced. We believe that it is a physically prudent budget. It is not touching our general fund, general reserve, which is very important, and it's touching reserves that we set aside for purposes that we're using it for. Maybe it's not how or what we would want to use it for in those areas. We would like to be able to do, I'd like to do storm drains, or I'd like to do some of the sewer, but I think that the circumstances preclude us from doing it. Nonetheless, we're using those monies that were set for infrastructure, on infrastructure. We are preserving our general fund reserve, which I believe is a very responsible thing to do. And I believe, unless I'm wrong, and I'll check my notes again, but I believe I've hit most every item that the council raised in our May discussions as various as our issues of substance. I recognize there's varying opinions on the council, and this is not uniform, you know, but if there's input, additional things that we should be considering or thinking about adjusting, I, I respect that, and I, you know, and again, councilwoman, I put the in the original May, like I did recommend, without the impetus of any other, the removal, and I knew and I've had this discussion about ACC OC, and my concern is relative to leadership versus representation. I believe we're paying for a representation and getting leadership that we didn't want to buy for. And I don't think that that's necessarily was my recommendation, and I submit that for your consideration as a councilman. You are, I respect one way or another, and I'll be happy to do whatever, but I did put it in, and it's in, it is in the presentation I made, that we would be removing it in the May budget presentation. So it is something that was, I recommended, and I think you and I have talked about it. I think that ACC is a very, very, very capable organization. We get a lot of valuable information. So I have some reservations about some of the loss of things we get from them. But also, at the same time, I'm also concerned about having to react in time. I've had to spend reacting when I got a call from a council member saying, what's this about something legislation ACC is proposing? And I didn't know that. That's not an organization that I want to work. I don't think that's the money I want, especially I want to pay for that. I'm paying for aggravation. I can get aggravation. So that's where I'm coming from. Truly, I respect your opinion, but that's, it is my recommendation.
I understand.
Thank you, Steve, for your part.
Okay.
Thank you. I understand.
Okay.
So we are at a point where we are ready to move forward, and the next two weeks, delve into finalizing the documents in extensive detail, so that you will have the budget intact on June 26th. We'll have it added in advance, so you'll have time to review it. But we sort of walked you in a new approach, because one of the things that I'm conscious of, and Frank is conscious of, is your concerns about trying to make this discernible and not, you know, I can tell you, I can tell you the gas tax funds are worth this dollar or that dollar, but that's, what you're looking for is what are we changing? What are we doing? What are we prioritizing? What are we not prioritizing? I think we've tried to hit that as part of this process, where we are now. If there are things I'm missing, help me. But I think I'm trying to hit those things and do it in a way that's constructive and most valuable economically from a staff perspective of getting it done.
I think there's a few things that I would like to see prior to the council. One of them is we've got two police cars out there that we purchased a couple of years ago. We, I'd like to see how much money it costs us. I know that one of them is rotting, because it doesn't go out very often, and I'd like to see the cost, the insurance, how much it's used. Because I know we do have some stuff here. I'd also like to see the projects, and I think that that needs to be presented also to the public. So when we're looking at this infrastructure cost, we need to see, they want to know what that means, you know? Is it the streets? And here we have these streets that we know what are going to get done, the storm drain, so that they have an idea exactly what it's going to be. Is it a traffic light that, you know, that we need to replace? That's easy for the public to understand when they look at that dollar amount. When it comes to the handicap access, which apparently, obviously must be some project that I was not aware of here, I think we need to have some more detailed, $40,000 is a lot of money. Certainly not one that I agree with, but let's see where that, where are you looking? Are you looking at specific? They're going to want to know, if we're adding that to the budget, where are we putting that? Not just around the schools, what schools, what streets? So there's a little background work, I think, that we need to get done to be able to understand, because I see some pet projects here, and it's something that I want to make sure that everyone understands what that is.
And I believe the handicap, just as a, that was, we had a, we had a member of the public came to a council meeting, and I had several calls on that where individuals were concerned about lack of access.
Sure.
So I've had a discussion with the city engineer, and he says, you know, we don't do it, we ought to be doing it, it's something, so it was generated by a resident.
Well, but.
And so.
Steve, that's not good enough. We've got calls, people can't walk in front of their house with their wheelchair, and I called you about that, and we haven't fixed that, and that hasn't come on the agenda. So, you know, we have calls every day about problems. So people just need to know where it's come from. I'm not saying that's not going to be spent, but they need to know where those, that money's going to go. Again, capital improvement, let's find, let's make sure everyone knows what's going on. And the VPTV capital improvement, if we can have some sort of a description for the public to know about that, because that's been around a long time. I think a lot, some of the newcomers don't know what that is.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
The pigment.
Yeah, the pigment. They don't know what that is. Just have some sort of a.
Yes.
You know, not in the 300-page document, please, you know, just in the agenda, so we could understand what that is. And then again, the history of the reserves, so we know how much we've put in there. That would be great.
Okay.
That's my, my request. Thank you.
Steve, I want to compliment you on how you did the budget here. I believe that any good budget starts with assumptions, and I think you've laid out really all assumptions in the budget here. And rather than having us pile through, you know, a lot of different numbers and things from time to time, I think you've given us a very good oversight of the budget.
That's all I have, Mayor. Our next action would be getting you the documents that you're asking for and getting it in advance. I'd like to make sure you have plenty of time to review. June 26th would be the council meeting that will be on the way for the adoption, and obviously sort of changes can be incorporated at that time.
Wouldn't you believe you'll have a package for us to review?
At a minimum, 72 hours in advance. I don't want to commit, because Frank and I were just talking about breaking it up and getting assignments, and I'll have staff meet tomorrow, and that's one of the weeks, assigning who gets what and where. And one of the things, Cameron, we haven't done some of it, because pending discussions, what else do we need to do, and what do we need to, so this has been valuable for me, so I thank you for your time, and I appreciate you letting me work through it this way a little differently this year. It's a lot easier in the past. I'll sort of let you know that Michelle prepared a budget document three different times. There were times we didn't know which version we had in the computer, because we were like, is that which date, when did you update that, et cetera? So we, we're not updating a document three different times, we're putting a document together at one time with one set of assumptions, that we all understand going in what there's to tell. So that's, I'm trying to use staff more efficiently, and I appreciate you letting me do that. And I think Councilwoman Fasenelli said, she sort of made an impact on me, and she said, you know, we used to sit around and talk about what's in the budget, not help me understand the budget, but, and that's what we're trying to get to. So what's in the budget, we've had some meaningful conversation. You can know what's in here, and we get to the point of what you're looking for. So thank you.
Setting aside personal political differences, I think that this document really wraps up all of our opinions, elected opinions, and sums up, and shows that you've been listening to the residents that have called in, that have written, and that have attended meetings. And I thank you for that. The attention to detail is superb, and it shows your expertise, and I thank both of you gentlemen for your time. I appreciate it.
Okay. Anything further?
It will be adjourned until the 26th.
Okay. That will be adjourned to the 26th.
Say something, Paul?
Oh.
Opened our public to say anything?
Yes, sure.
Sure. Go ahead, Joe.
Okay.
You're going to reopen, you got to reopen the meeting.
Okay. I'll reopen the meeting then.
Okay. Sorry about that. I don't know when.
Could you identify your name?
My name is Joe Rople, 9492 Brenmar Drive. I don't know how long it takes the city to recognize American Disability Act. Some people don't understand it. It's been years, and you still don't go for it. Now, you have things in this budget, and it's more important than people's safety, okay? I use the handicap ramps all around Villa Park, and there's places we get stuck, because at the end of the street, there's no handicap ramp. But that's not the, the point is, when do you plan on start building these handicap ramps? You have $50,000 for a green belt instead of people's safety? Don't make sense. You know, I mean, that's the most important thing I have to say about that. And the other thing is, you talked about a green belt on Taft Avenue from Cannon. Well, I come off of Cannon the other day, drove down the street, and I said, this street looks like hell. It needs repairs. Where's the repairs for this street? It doesn't look like Villa Park. So I don't know where some of you are coming from, or what. But I hope you understand where I'm coming from, and I hope you understand the American Disability Act. Villa Park has been neglect in that area, so please look it up and follow through. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Joe. Okay. With that, I'll close the meeting to the 26th.